Okay, it is seven o'clock. We're meeting in the second floor of the historic courthouse for the first time and I guess ever is the way I understand it. They had the other meeting over here, so it's now, we're now in session. Leonard, would you give the invocation, please?
Let us pray. Precious heaven and father, we thank you for this great day. We thank you so much for the rain you give us. Thank you so much for each day that you give us. Forgive us of our shortcomings and bless us each day. Bless the boys that are fighting for us and keeping us safe where we can meet like this. Bless each one of us. Give us the knowledge to handle the county business. In Jesus Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Would you join me, please, as we pledge the proud flag of our great country? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Show me the flag.
Texas. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, on indivis.
We have some special presentations tonight. Sheriff.
Judge, commissioners, audience, come before you tonight to do a couple of awards. And as sheriff, it's a tough job being the sheriff, but you can't do it without a good team. So my team, just yesterday, had some jailers that did something that made me very, very proud, taking care of their job and taking care of their business. And then the other day, it just came to my attention that one of my deputies had done something very, very good and made me proud and should make all the citizens of Hood County proud to have me having such good officers out there, working in the jail and working out in the county. So I want to make some awards tonight. I guess we'll call up Josh Lane tonight. Josh, he's a deputy that's been with me for a while and he's also been a fireman, he's also EMT, so he has a lot of special knowledge that on December 31st, he put to good use. There was a call for a structure fire. The citizens, he found out from the neighbors, were not out of the home. And him, with his little extra knowledge of experience, he was able to go in and get those people out before it got too bad for the people. So I want to commend him on his action he took that day of December 31st and recognize him tonight with a commendation letter. Really appreciate you. And a certificate. And this is a lifesaver, and a life-saving award, a pin for, well, he didn't even have any, so I guess this will be one of his first pins that he gets. So, thank you for all you do for him. Like I said, we had an incident in the jail and the staff, one of my more important jobs, well, it's important for me to take care of business out on the streets, but it's also important for me and my staff to take care of business inside the jail. That's one of my main responsibilities as sheriff, is see to it that we take care of all the inmates of the jail. I've got to feed them three times a day and keep watch over them, make sure they're okay. Well, yesterday morning, bright and early, at around four o'clock in the morning, we had an inmate that suffered a near fatal heart attack. And it was great, the teamwork that my jailers exhibited and all came together and pulled together, worked together as a team. And when he went out of my jail, he had a heart rate and spent the night in intensive care. And I want to recognize these jailers for their hard work. And this, by the way, is Captain Brown. I know most of you know her. She's the leader back there, and so I'll let Captain Brown read off the names.
Lieutenant Daniel Sweeney.
Should I use a mic, Sheriff?
Oh, I'm sorry. Lieutenant Daniel Sweeney. You want to?
Same thing, we're, I've got a letter of commendation for him and a certificate and a life-saving award. Thank you, thank you, Sheriff, for your leadership and everything that happened.
Sheriff, turn around so they can get you in the picture.
Oh, yeah, turn that way.
Same thing, I want to recognize you with a letter of commendation and a certificate of commendation and...
Thank you. Turn around.
This is a letter of commendation and a certificate of commendation. And really appreciate your teamwork and effort.
Get your picture.
Thank you for being part of that team that night, plus a letter of commendation and certificate of commendation and a life-saving award. So, thank you.
Good job.
Stephen, I wanted to mention, he's been part of the team for a while. He started out in the jail as a, just a bookend clerk and worked his way up to jailer. And his sister is a dispatcher and his mom also works for the county, so it's kind of like a family deal. So greatly appreciate all my staff for everything they do. And thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Okay, the next item on the agenda is special presentations. Bob, what do you have tonight?
Judge, people to present to tonight for longevity. One is one of our commissioners, Richard Roan, who has five years with the county. He is celebrating his five years with the county also.
I believe Joe, Joe, are you next?
Well, yeah, if he's there.
Yeah, come on up, Joe.
Thank you, Judge Cockerham and commissioners, for letting me be here tonight. I'm Joe Williams. I'm vice president of the Lake Granbury Waterfront Owners Association. This past year, the Commissioners' Court, Hood County, passed a resolution regarding the BRA's application for water rights use with Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. Judge Cockerham and the county commissioners met with city council members, Representative Jim Caffrey and Senator Birdwell in a meeting this past summer, discussing this application. From this meeting, Granbury City Council and the Hood County Commissioners both passed resolutions that would ask TCEQ not to allow the BRA a 60% increase in water rights until economic and water management studies are completed. We want to thank you, the judge, the county commissioners, for passing this resolution. LGWA currently does, we have a plaque for the Commissioners' Court that we would like to present at a little bit later date, in a couple of weeks, because we have one other item that we would like to ask you about regarding another issue that's coming up with TCEQ. Later this month, three TCEQ commissioners will start making their final decision on the BRA's water rights usage. Remember, the BRA is asking for a 60% increase in water rights out of Lake Granbury and the Brazos River Basin. On January 25th, we have been asked to join with Senator Brian Birdwell and Representative Jim Caffrey to travel to Austin. There, we can show the commissioners at TCEQ that Hood County is unified in preserving Lake Granbury and the Brazos River Basin. As you can even see today, our current water rights are already contributing to low water levels, and there's also another golden algae outbreak, just like we had last year. We need to preserve all we have now, not add another 60% increase onto the system. So, on January 25th, Lake Granbury Waterfront Association has chartered a bus to Austin. And for the county commissioners, we would like for all of them to be on the bus, along with Judge Cockerham. And of course, LGWA will pay for these costs. It's a one-day trip, we'll leave out of here at 5:30, and we'll return later in the afternoon. We, I have the, where the bus will meet, and then also a little bit more about the charter on the bus and actually where we'd go out there, and I'd like to leave that with you. I would like to come back in February after TCEQ has made their final decision. We'll do our presentation with the plaques that I talked about tonight, and then we can also see what the final decision is made there with the commissioners. So, thank you again for passing the resolution. I would like to pass out our bus schedule and stuff on the 25th and invite everyone for y'all to go along, no charge. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Very good, thanks.
Thank you, Joe.
5:30.
I'm sorry.
Thanks, Joe.
It wasn't my idea.
Thank you, Joe.
Okay, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Does any commissioner wish to pull anything off of the consent agenda?
D, Your Honor.
D?
Yes, sir.
Any other?
Hearing no other comment, Judge, I make a motion to approve consent agenda with the exception of item D.
Second. I have a motion made by Commissioner Simpson, seconded by Commissioner Roan, to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item D. Any further discussion? And all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much.
Judge, this afternoon, the sheriff came down to our building and talked about item D, and I think for the public's knowledge and for the court, he needs to, I'd like for him just to get up and explain what we talked about a little bit on item D for this EOC grant and what we're doing and what the continuation is and the timeline that he talked about.
Judge, commissioners, this item on the agenda is to pass the sub-recipient agreement for the EOC grant, Emergency Operations Center grant. We have a total, once it's issued out to the county, 90 days to pass that, to accept that and send it back to the county. So that's running out here in the next couple of days. This EOC grant, myself, Brian, fine, the fire marshal, Rhonda, my administrative assistant, Steve Smith, we've looked at a lot of different things. Brian has went out of his way and we've been looking at EOCs around this part of north-central Texas. Brian has met with some architects, I've met with an architect, we had a meeting up at my office, we've had a number of meetings up at the office with, in regards to this. And at first, we were hoping to get a whole lot more money and we were hoping to get extra help from other entities, but it doesn't appear we're going to get that, so we're going to be on our own on this. But with the help of the grant, Brian and myself do feel that we still will be able to move forward and get an emergency operations center that'll be better than we have now and serve us into the future. So, this is just a formatally to officially accept it as a county, and then we can start to move forward with the budget and with plans with the EOC. So we still have a, an end date still way out there in the future, actually like a couple of years down the road. So it's not a rush thing, but we just, we're almost out of time on this 90-day deadline to get this before you and allow the judge to sign so we can send it back to the state. So this time, I just ask that you approve the sub-recipient agreement for the EOC grant and allow the judge to sign the same.
Thank you, Sheriff. Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion made by Commissioner Berry, and seconded by Commissioner Roan, to approve the county judge to sign the EOC. Would you tell everybody what EOC? I'm sure there's some people that don't know.
The EOC stands for Emergency Operations Center, and what it is, is a place where everybody can come together, county officials, city officials, fire departments, the hospital, the school district, everybody that has a, has something that they can contribute to an emergency situation to help overcome that. And interface with state resources, things of that nature, and interface with a command post that's maybe at a flood, a fire, whatever the case is. So it's a very valuable, needed asset to the county, and the one we have now is way too small.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. They have a, is any further discussion on approving this? Any further? And all in favor? Pardon?
We did.
Pardon?
We voted.
No, we didn't vote on this.
Go for it.
Okay.
We did.
Well, okay, we voted, thank you. Motion passed. All right, the next item is business subdivision roads and plaids.
Judge Cockerham, commissioners, on the development commission, we have two chairs that are expiring, Chair Number Two and Chair Number Four. In the November meeting, the Development Commission spoke with the two members. Both members would like to run another term, would like to fill that position. At Chair Number Two is Carolyn Meehan, and at Chair Number Four is Paul Painter. So the Development Commission does recommend that you reappoint these two members.
Second.
All right, a motion made by Commissioner Hetherton, seconded by Commissioner Berry, to fill the expiring terms on the Development Commission, Chairs Two and Four. Any further discussion? And all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Budget and finance.
Good evening, judges and commissioners. As was discussed at last court, there has been a need to provide for some fuel money for the automobile that the court has provided for the justices of the peace to use for law enforcement purposes. And after speaking with each one of the justices of the peace, they have recommended that we move $300 from each one of their travel line budgets into a new line item that's in non-departmental, Line Number 331, for fuel. So that would be a total of $900 to be in that line item, and I recommend that for your approval as a budget line amendment.
Judges, a matter of comment, with the approval of that line item, the JPs will have access to the vehicle that we had planned, that will make that official.
Very good. And I, do I have a motion to approve this line item?
So moved.
Second.
Second, first, motion made by Commissioner Simpson, seconded by Commissioner Roan. Any further discussion? And all, oh, I'm sorry.
We've got on our bill, no take-home cars. Where are we going to leave this car? Here at the courthouse? Where, where they can pick it up here?
I don't, with any... Danny, do you want to address that?
I believe it would be more beneficial to everybody in the county if whoever was on call would be able to utilize that as a take-home vehicle, because if we get called out, that's when we need the cars, at night when we get called out. If Judy Watson is at her house and gets a call to La Pan, she'd have to drive into the courthouse to get the vehicle. If she's at her house and has the vehicle, she could drive straight to the call. And that's what I thought the intent of this vehicle was for.
You would be coming, she would be coming straight by the courthouse to go to La Pan. And we've got a policy on the books, to no take-home, we're stopping all take-home cars. I don't, I don't see why we'd want to go back and do this again, go against the policy we've got.
Well, I just understood from the district attorney that that's what this was for, was a take-home car for us, but I may have misunderstood it.
Any further discussion on this?
Well, it needs to be discussed and decided, but are you going to drive it every day then, to work and, if you're, I mean?
Whoever's on call would drive it in, yes, sir. And they'd be on call and go out on every call that are called out for.
That's a two-edged sword. You're going to use a lot more gas doing that if you drive it from your home to breakfast and to work, and then out on call. If it's going to be used for after-hours call, you're going to use less money, but you know, it's your money in the travel budget. We've just provided the car because of Rob Christian.
Yes, sir.
But if you drive it home every day and you drive it down here and you drive it to lunch and you drive it everywhere else, then you're going to dip into your travel budget a lot quicker.
And I understand, but we're on call the whole time, too.
We dealt though that two weeks ago, I understand.
Yes, sir.
What difference is this going to make on the insurance for letting them take it home?
Bob?
It's going to add additional liability that we weren't counting on. Dollar-wise, today, right now, it's not going to amount that much, but it's the liability that if, you know, in route going one place or another, whether it's some company, county business or not, if we have a wreck, we're going to be responsible.
We're responsible if they wreck their own car, though. There's an issue there.
But I want, I would like to say this, I mean, this is no different than the police officers. And the sheriff, he doesn't have his people taking take-home cars. So I don't, I don't think from a risk standpoint, this is a good deal.
We're fixing the house when the quickest the JPs get down here. He's got, he's got two cars that he's going to park here, because we won't let them take them home.
Constable.
Because they're constables, I mean. So I move that we park it here with them.
Motion on full.
Well, I don't think we can do that tonight because it's not on the agenda. We can either approve this line item budget.
Well, we can approve this.
Okay, I have a motion made by Commissioner Simpson, seconded by Commissioner Roan. Any further discussion?
Well, I do know that it is full and the decals are put on the side of the car, so you know, this, I mean, we can prove the line item and that way they can start using it for that benefit of going to DOSs and arrangements, but somebody, we need to work on this and have maybe a workshop or two of us try to get with the JPs and work out a compromise and find a solution.
Okay, I agree. It's a new, it's a new item, and we probably need to develop policy that runs concurrent with the current policy that we already have. So let's go ahead and approve this and get them on the road, and then we'll come back and look at review policy.
I think we probably ought to have the same two commissioners that are already on that policy committee.
That's fine.
Thanks, Nick.
It's all right.
The motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Then all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Consider payment of bills.
Commissioners, the total bills for your consideration come to $496,857.14. I'd like to review some of the items that are greater than $10,000. The first one you'll see is for attorneys and court reporters and visiting judges. That's $29,850.90. That continues to be a very large item. We did receive a little bit of good news. It's reported that one of the capital murder trials that had been scheduled, the judge did accept a plea on that. So that will set aside some of what we had anticipated could have been very large expenditures there. Then for Ben E. Keith, $11,136.56 for jail groceries. To the city of Granbury, $22,842.75 for utilities. To HDR Incorporated, $16,716.98 for architectural services on this courthouse.
Months will those stand, so just for HDR, do you, do you remember the months on those?
That should complete their work. I don't know that they have any additional work unless it would be for the completion report.
I think that's it. Okay.
Also on this building, there's $960 to Southwest Museum and Clock Restoration. That should be the final payment on restoring the clock in this building. To Martin's Office Supply, $13,157.10. That's for various office supplies and also for Constable Four, office furnishings for this building. Then to the Texas Association of Counties, there are two payments. One for $9,126.29 for unemployment insurance premiums, and then $40,364.41 for workers' comp. Then to visual innovations companies, $267,051.77. That's for the audiovisual equipment in this courtroom. I would like to say that the court some time ago set aside $150,000 out of the courtroom security fund to help pay for that. There is in that fund just over $220,000. And what I would recommend is that you allow me to bring that back to court, next court, and transfer $220,000 out of the courtroom security fund, if that meets with your approval, into the courthouse restoration fund to help cover some of those costs. It still would leave $47,000 excess costs that is not covered by that transfer. But I have prepared and submitted payment warrants for each one of these expenditures, along with all the others that are listed in the payment register. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have, but I would recommend these for your approval.
Move out of five, paying the bills.
Second. I have questions.
Okay, I have a motion made by Commissioner Hetherton, seconded by Commissioner Simpson. Commissioner Berry?
Just a point of order, the $267,000 is not just for the courtroom. It's for dragging fiber and wire for the whole building. It's for every office building, for their telephone, their computer. It's all the way to the tower and all the way to the basement, so it's not just this courtroom for the $267,000. Let's go back to HDR a minute. They're supposed to do a completion report. So the judge asked if this was October and November billing. Do we know that or not? Because we got a letter from the state of Texas this week wanting to know where we were on that completion report. Did we not, did we not, Judge?
Yes, we did.
And that's part of HDR and Architect's final report.
That's exactly right.
If we make this payment, then they're going to turn right around and bill us again. That's why I want to know what this payment's for.
I'm sorry, I didn't bring the exact bill with me tonight. And on the list, it really doesn't identify except by invoice number.
I do remember them, though, they were past months. This is not, these, and I talked to HDR and they said, this is the last bill that we'll get for that $9,000, you know, a month. That, that's gone. The only thing that we will be charged from now on from them is the completion report. So...
We don't know how much that's going to be.
But no, we don't.
Well, we quit having courthouse meetings, so it shouldn't be 9,500 a month.
I agree. Yeah. And they said it wouldn't be. I agree. Yeah. And they said it wouldn't be.
Okay. Call question.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next is consider and take appropriate action regarding fixed assets purchased for the county court at law.
I believe Judge McSiney is here to present his request, Your Honor.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir. I submitted a purchase order for two laptops. My laptop, according to IT, has suffered the true death and is not going to be resurrected. That was a lap, the original laptop I had, I use the laptops on my bench so that I can have my court reporter report in real time. So I can read the testimony as it is being presented to me. My original laptop that I brought over that was on the bench came over from this place, this old courthouse to the new courthouse in 2000. I had it in 2005. And I moved it over in 2006. It died in 2010. And rather than asking for a new one in 2010, in the middle of the budget year, I just had IT bring me a used one. I have no idea where they found it. But it worked until last week, or two weeks ago. Then it had a little, kind of a buzzing sound and smoke came out of it and it blew up. So I need a laptop for my bench. And I need a laptop for the court reporter because she converts the stenographic language into real time. It then sends it to my laptop on my bench and I can read the testimony. And it's, it's pretty critical for me.
I do agree. Because I was doing a mental hearing in there the other day and I was going, Cheryl's over, you know, and I'm going, where's the testimony, you know? And so it wasn't there. I understand it just strings out and goes into Never Neverland, so.
Well, I'll give you an example of why I need it. And I have a used one now that came from Judge Walton. And he, it was so broken down that he didn't want it. But they set it up on my bench. And it was reading so slowly that a, that the witness today had already completed their testimony. And it was still trying to catch up when the other witness was testifying. So it was very disconcerting. So I really need it as rapidly as I can get it. And that's why I asked for it, so.
Jackie, if I read my backup, it's 1866 for the two computers. Is that correct? Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Berry, seconded by Commissioner Heatherton, to approve the purchase of two laptops for the county court at law. Any further discussion?
Fund, Fund 55.
Correct.
Is there any problem, Jackie, with what the note from Jan stated for Cheryl to get a USB connection? Is something you guys can provide her with?
Yes, it is.
All right. Any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. The last item is convenient to executive session under government code, Texas Government Code 551.071 for consultation with attorney regarding pending legislation for a settlement offer with Crossmatch. This is a, an item that we need to go into the next room and talk about. We will be, won't be long. Okay, we're reconvened into a regular session. Who wants to address this?
I'll, I'll address this. This is an issue that involves a piece of equipment that was purchased, as best we can determine, in 2004. It was purchased by people who are no longer here with the county, people who are no longer employed here. None of the Commissioners Court nor the judge were here and involved in that. But that piece of equipment eventually went to a lawsuit. And we're making a motion, or I'm making a motion tonight to resolve the lawsuit for the specified agreement.
Well, I'll second it with the fact that neither was the sheriff, the sheriff at the time of this, and neither was IT director, our IT director, when this become a problem. So I'll second with that, your motion.
All right, I have a motion made by Commissioner Simpson, seconded by Commissioner Berry, to accept the settlement offered by Crossmatch Company. Any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And I think we allowed Stan to identify the line item to take that, either 55 or find the line item that you want to take that out of.
Okay, it is now 7:40 and we are adjourned.